Call to order, town council meeting for May 4th, 2016. If I can call on Mr. Brown and Mr. Smith, who are probably our two oldest veterans of the United States Armed Forces as we rise, and if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I know, especially the old ones.
Our meetings are recorded electronically, we go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have anything placed on the agenda for the town council meeting should have had it to Town Hall by 3:00 on the previous Wednesday. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, we ask you to sign up over here on this table. Approval of minutes from the April 6th, 2016, it's Tab 3. Donna has also emailed them out to everyone. Do I hear a motion for approval or amendment?
So moved.
I made a couple of suggestions to Donna, she has them, maybe just some minor things. And with those changes, unless there's any other, I'll make the motion to approve that minutes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Paulsgrove, seconded by Councilman Huffman, to approve the minutes from the April 6th, 2016, meeting with amendments. All those in favor, if I may say, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry. Before we do reports, we're going to jump way down for, under new business, recognition of 90-year-old-plus residents' birthdays. So Donna, I'm going to ask Donna to come out. This was really her idea about a year ago, to recognize our senior residents, many of which have lived their entire life in New Windsor. And Donna, you go ahead and read it, because this is your idea, so go ahead.
I think it's a very proud thing to have lived for over 90 years, experienced what these folks have lived through, and I'm very proud to have them as residents at camp. So this is just a little insignificant plaque to honor them. I guess we'll do that for now.
Sure.
All right, if I could have...
Now, first, we're starting to recognize individuals that are 90 or older, and because we just started this, if you were a little over 90, well then, you're going to have to...
Grandfather, yeah.
Is that 90 plus?
Yeah.
Can I, should we be following, or please come up with it? And anyone that wishes to come with her?
With the family?
Yeah, more than welcome.
And Ruby said she'd like to have about 30 minutes to talk. He's gone. Excuse us.
You're fine. We're lucky.
Mayor and Town Council of the town of New Windsor on May 4th, 2016, wish to recognize Ruby Ballinger for reaching 93 years of age on April 11th, 2016. Want to introduce your family?
My daughter, Barbara, my son, Dick, my daughter, Jeanne, and my son, Bobby Ballinger.
Thank you all very much.
Any words about living in New Windsor?
Yes.
Having some changes?
A lot of changes, I can tell you that.
How many years have you been in camp?
All my life.
All your life?
Not really in camp. We did down in Northern, but we always had Bucky Bar.
Okay.
That's how it's born there.
Wow.
And that's been 93 years ago.
Have you been in your current location since you moved to town?
Yes.
About 60, close to 60 years, 55 years coming back. Well, thank you very much for...
And they take all race, that's what they use. From me, or...
93 years ago, that was quite...
You're probably 18.
Had to get a place to stay halfway through.
Thank you.
Donna, Donna, I don't think Mr. Smith can begin...
Mr. Brown? Gary? Well, we know him by Gary, it's actually Raymond, Gary. And anyone else who wants to join, Mr. Brown? You should join.
Evening. Mayor and Town Council of the town of New Windsor on May 4th, 2016, wish to recognize Raymond Gary Brown for reaching 93 years of age on April 4th, 2016. Want to introduce your family?
Well, that's my daughter, Flack, my wife, my son, Alan, his wife.
Want to talk a little bit about your experience in New Windsor, what you did over the years?
What's that?
What you did over the years in New Windsor, post office?
Yeah, I worked there quite a while. I was 43.
43 years.
28.
In College Avenue residence for how many years? Since 1950, give or take?
Yeah.
66 years.
66 years, 1950?
Yeah. Do you ever spend time in Rowdy's Corner?
Now, see, some people are laughing, and you know that's a joke. A lot of people don't know the connection there.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Did you meet somebody there?
Yeah, that's my wife.
Now, there's some stories.
Yeah, I enjoy it in town, in New Windsor.
It's been a pleasure having you.
Yes.
It's a most quiet town. Everybody loves nice people in it. I'm thankful for that.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate you very much, and your family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just missed this journey. He doesn't walk easily, I think they should come to him.
And Mr. Gordon Smith.
You can do it right here.
Just go over to him, yeah.
We're going to head over to this...
There's all the two folks who are actually downstairs there.
And if you believe, Mr. Smith, you are our oldest living resident, currently.
Is that right?
That's living here, yes, yes.
Mayor and Town Council of the town of New Windsor on May 4th, 2016, wish to recognize Gordon E. Smith for reaching 98 years of age on April 20th, 2016. Any words about living in New Windsor?
I'm going to run off.
You still an Oriole fan?
Yeah.
I think you're a big Oriole fan.
Say hello to my dad, he's a board raisin' baller, sitting, moved up here about 15 years ago, and he stayed in the country, so he's happy about being up here. And out of Baltimore, I think we never did him out, but he seems to like it up here pretty well. This is, I'm his son, that is the secret to his longevity. This is my daughter, Monica. This is my oldest child, Tyler. This is his wife, Amanda. This is my daughter, Taylor. These are my grandchildren, and his great-grandchildren, Lincoln and Austin.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Smith. I do want to recognize two people that could not be here tonight. One is Mayor and Town Council of the town of New Windsor on May 4th, 2016, wish to recognize Betty L. Young for reaching 92 years of age on March 3rd, 2016. So I'll see that her family gets that. And then, Mayor and Town Council of the town of New Windsor on May 4th, 2016, wish to recognize William Wagner Miller for reaching 93 years of age on January 23rd, 2016. So those folks will get their plaques.
And just to let Donna, or, one, I want to thank Donna for coming up with this idea and putting a lot of effort into it, because it's not the easiest thing to be able to track down ages of everyone, but thank you, Donna. And then also, that's not everybody that's 90-plus in New Windsor. We're doing it on a quarterly basis, so if their birthdays are in the next three months, then at our August meeting, we'll be recognizing the others. So, again, thank you, Donna. Great job, great idea. Reports, council committees, public works, Councilman Huffman?
So, the Public Works Department is always very busy, and with all the rain that we've been having lately, they're really going to be busy mowing the property around town, so I wish them luck with that. This past Saturday, we had the bulk trash pickup, and it was very successful. Many dumpsters were filled, the Public Works crew did a great job, they were there to offload the material from the trucks and really help the town residents, so I appreciate all they did. So Frank, if you would please pass that along to them. And so the town residents know, the yard waste pickup is in full swing, the first and third Wednesday of every month through October. Moving to the planning committee, they did meet again this past month. They are reviewing the Carroll County 2015 Planning Annual Report. That report catalogs the development and planning information for the previous calendar year, so everything is rolled into one report that gets submitted to Annapolis, and we're checking out the New Windsor portion of that document. But as a whole, the county was fairly, fairly quiet this year for development. It was one of the slower years for development in the county.
All right. Any questions for Councilman Huffman? Thank you. Just a reminder on the yard waste bags, if it's tough for you guys to pick it up and take it to the curb, it's probably going to be heavy for the guys, so I think we got 40-pound limit, so appreciate everybody keeping that in mind. Water and sewer, Councilman Paulsgrove?
Manager Schaefer will have a couple of water and sewer-related items in his report, but one item I'd like to share with you, which was shared with me by Jack, is it's kind of a maintenance concern and issue, but our new wastewater treatment plant isn't necessarily new anymore. We're coming up on six years here pretty soon. We're starting to notice some minor leaks in the SBR tanks, or the sequencing batch reactor tanks, the two of the three big round ones, and maybe even the third one, the sledge tank, might be leaking a little bit. But Jack's got that under control, and at some point, we'll actually be draining down those SBR tanks one at a time, and the company that installed them will be doing some maintenance by drilling some holes through them and putting some rivets in them to seal up some minor leaks in some of the joints. So it's just kind of a reminder, we do realize we have a lot of stuff around here, some of our infrastructure, 100-year-old pipelines and stuff that we know is old, but even something that we think is new is still getting some age on it, and we, it's just a reminder that everything needs constant maintenance. So that's what I have to share this evening.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Councilman Paulsgrove? Public safety, Councilman Smith?
It's my family calling at the start.
How come they're leaving when you're getting ready to give your report?
Because he likes to talk all the time.
There you go. And the mini-me has spoken. The daughter that I was told that I would be cursed with someday by my mother, you're going to have one just like you. First of all, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the town council, and as well as a lot of the citizens. I was out for the past month with some surgeries, and I received a lot of well wishes, a wonderful fruit basket from the town council, and from some of our citizens, some really nice cards, and some well wishes, so I want to thank everybody for that. I have had a chance to talk pretty extensively with Deputy Townsend, and we went over some problem areas, and I will defer to him for the report, but one of, two of the things that I think that he's taken some real proactive stances on is speeding, and not only through the old part of town, but in some of the subdivisions as well. So what he's going to do is he's actually going to adjust his hours. He's kind of studied that a little bit to find out when the problems are actually occurring, and has determined that it's during times when he's not necessarily, you know, on duty at that time. So he, he went to the sheriff, and he's going to adjust his schedule accordingly, so he's able to get some of that stuff under control. He also has advised that there's some little juvenile problems going around, some of the barriers were knocked over around the sinkhole, he's been proactive about that as well, contacting Lehigh. Lehigh has agreed to put more secure barriers up around it, and of course, that's being repaired, so that's going to be, you know, hopefully resolved soon. But he's going to do some extra patrols there as well, and again, adjust his schedule out to make sure that he's able to be there in case it becomes a major issue. So, again, I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank Deputy Townsend for helping me get adjusted to this new position, and I want to thank the mayor for entrusting me with that, and I will defer any further to Deputy Townsend.
Any questions or comments for Councilman Smith?
I have a comment, and I actually scared a very nice young lady in our audience tonight, because I think we need to do something about the parking sign at the corner of High and Church Street that was moved back a couple of years ago, a little bit closer to the house next to mine. It's too far back, and people don't see it, and four times in the last week, I've had to go out and tell somebody to move, or go across to the restaurant, and have them have somebody move, and people are having to pull literally out into the middle of High Street to make a left-hand turn, or go straight. So it's, we moved it back so people wouldn't park there, and now it's so far back that people don't see it, and they park there. So I think that's probably more frank than...
A yellow line there, you mean?
Well, there's no curb to paint a yellow, I mean, yeah, maybe we could paint a yellow line on the street, take a look, you know, maybe Mark can take a look at it. I've called Mark a couple of times.
This is on State Highway.
It is.
This is, you're talking about on the State Highway?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's in front of, it's not really in front of my house, it's kind of in between my house and the house next door.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, it's, I'm not, I mean, four times this week, and that's when I'm home, so it's just a problem. So, and I've talked to Mark about this speeding too, so we've had a few conversations, so that's all.
All right. While you're warmed up now, Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz?
Okay, the website is coming along, and I actually had, well, not really talked, but emailed a couple of times with Frank today. The developer had contacted us, they want photographs and documents for the new site, and they're willing to take photos at an extra charge, but I think that I can help out with that, so I'm going to go around and take some pictures for them. And then, we're a little confused about, they asked for a document transfer protocol, I don't really know what that means, so we'll get to the bottom of that and figure out what they want. I just wanted to sort of bring to the council's attention, because we didn't really talk about this, just briefly, that there's new guidelines for Americans with Disabilities Act about accessibility of electronic communication, which a website is, and they're especially stringent on government. So I did email the developer, he should know that, but I did let him know that today in an email, so. So in other words, if you're blind, and you go to a website, you should be able to navigate it, and there's certain guidelines for how that has to be done.
Very good.
And then, just so you know too, mayor, I spoke to Uncle Matty about the business breakfast, and I got the list of businesses from town, so you and I should talk about the details for that.
Very good. That's a kind of an ideal from Nancy McCormick up in Tonton Town, she's the director of Economic Development for the city of Tonton Town, and I think, oh, probably for more than 10 years, I'm probably going to hear about it if I'm not anywhere close, but they have a business breakfast up at Tonton Town Bowen Alley, the second Friday of every month, and it's basically a networking opportunity for all the local businesses, and I usually try to attend, and I thought maybe we could try to do something that here, like that here, New Windsor for our businesses, maybe start with on a quarterly basis, and see how everybody responds to that, and whether or not we want to do it monthly. Uncle Matty's has agreed to coming in early and having some kind of light breakfast, but mainly to give our local businesses here in town an opportunity to meet and greet one another, maybe be able to help one another out, and then also bring in people like Nancy McCormick and John Wheatman, who used to be with the county, he's great with small businesses, and also to tell our local businesses what grants are out there to maybe fix up the facade of your building, or maybe buy equipment for your business. So, you know, if we don't tell our businesses what is out there for them, they'll benefit from it. So I appreciate Councilwoman Schultz agreeing to this, and really taking it and flying with it, so, thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Schultz? Community enhancement, Councilwoman Custin, welcome to your very first town council meeting.
Thank you.
I know, I greatly appreciate you stepping forward and being willing to be involved in the town council, and be involved in the town. I know you've only had a couple of weeks to get your feet wet, so I don't expect a 20-minute report, but probably 10 minutes will be okay.
Well, I'm a lawyer, so talking is never a problem for me, but I am so glad to be the newest town council person, and hopefully we'll be able to live up to the hard work and spirit of Wayne Blackston, who held this spot before me, and I'm going to try my best to do that. I've been put in charge of the community enhancement section, and so I would hope that if any of you have any ideas, or things that you think of that would help make New Windsor a more pleasurable and enjoyable place for everybody to live, please let me know, we'll see what we can do, and work on all those issues. And I'm so glad, I haven't met most of the people in this room, I have a couple of familiar faces, but I hope that I can do a good job for everybody, and we'll know everybody sooner rather than later. So thank you for the opportunity, mayor, and next time, there'll be a substantive report.
I won't ask for any comments or questions this time. Mayor's report, Tab 5, try to be brief, quite a few meetings in the past month. Frank and I met with, had a meeting with State Highway Administrator Greg Johnson and his staff about our Streetscape project, about funding and different issues, and also what House Bill 1013 will mean to the town of New Windsor and any other small municipality. That is a bill that the Democrats in Annapolis passed, that will make all road projects go by a scoring system. No one seems to know what that scoring system is, doesn't have, there's no rhyme or reason really for it. I think there's like nine different things in the criteria of scoring a project, you know, safety, which I think should have a lot higher scoring potential, has the same as everything else. Well, I think some of the things are population, traffic, which, you know, on a small scale like New Windsor is, we're not going to score that well. So we'll have to stay tuned to see where our funding priority is in Annapolis for our Streetscape project. Attended the West Carroll Rec Council's open house, I invited Commissioner Frazier to attend, because he has shown interest in what's going to happen to schools once they close, so it was a very good meeting. He got to hear about the needs of the Rec Council, and plus some suggestions I had about New Windsor Middle School, if it actually does close later this year. Met with Roy Libden and John Hawksford about a disc golf course, we discussed that a little bit at our work session, so hopefully we'll have an 18-hole golf course on disc golf in the near future. Attended the Baltimore Region Traffic Incident Management Conference, and I got the opportunity to talk to Secretary of Transportation Pete Ron, and asked him basically the same questions about our Streetscape project, and at this time, he doesn't really know what, at that time, it had only been passed for about a week or two, so, you know, it's still all new to him, so hopefully we'll get more information on that. Meeting with Frank, and I had a meeting with Jane Castle from the Department of Housing and Community Development about some grants, so he helped us a lot on that, so I'm working on one grant to redo College Avenue and Blue Ridge, hopefully end of this year, first of next year, probably be next year if we get the grant, so we're working on that. New Windsor Heritage Committee had a real nice event at Uncle Matty's Pints in the past, and that was well-attended, was sold out real quick, so hopefully you guys do that again sometime soon. Had, we attended, some of us attended the New Windsor Community Council meeting at Lehigh Cement Company to see and hear about their updates on the conveyor belt, and I know some of you may not know these two individuals, but I attended a retirement for county employees, Mike Witson and Joe Farrenhold. Over the years, they have helped us out in the town on different things, and Mike Witson retired after 43 years with the Carroll County Government, and Joe retired after 34 years. So if you see either one of them, you know them, congratulate them on a great job with the county over the years. Throughout the month of April, been working on the special projects grant, which is the lead paint abatement of Dealman Inn, and then also the grant for College Avenue and Blue Ridge, and a few other things there. Also with my report, that's not in here, because we just met today, Frank and I met with Sarah Hayden. Doris Pierce had sent an email to us about this individual, she's a historic real estate development individual that is working with Preservation Maryland in the historic, of historic properties redevelopment program, and what she's doing is doing a study that will be looking at what types of real estate-based tools that are out there for us, loans, technical service, tax credit assistance, feasibility studies, project management, and evaluating different properties in the state of Maryland. And I think what we really came up with is that we really need a project manager for Dealman Inn, to tell us, I mean, we know what we need to be doing, but how to get there is more than what we're familiar with, so I think she's going to put us in touch with some people that will be able to make it happen after we get the lead paint baited. And I think, oh, one thing I am very proud of this past Saturday, the Volunteer Beautification Day. We started this about three or four years ago, we had about 50 volunteers, which was outstanding. Want to thank Frank, Kalina, Councilman Huffman, and our Public Works guys for coming out and helping. We had individuals from Untown Bible Church Youth Group, Comcast Cares, the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County, Boys and Girls Club of Westminster, Mr. Calvin Hall, who's a teacher, 7th grade social studies teacher at New Windsor Middle School, had some students with him. was outstanding. Want to thank Frank, Kalina, Councilman Huffman, and our Public Works guys for coming out and helping. We had individuals from UNTOWN Bible Church Youth Group, Comcast Cares, the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County, Boys and Girls Club of Westminster, Mr. Calvin Hall, who's a teacher, seventh-grade social studies teacher at New Windsor Middle School, had some students with him, Boys Out Troop 224 from Sykesville, Lehigh Cement Company had, I requested that they bring their street sweeper in town, and did a fabulous job where they were able to. And then also, State Highway Administration brought their sweeper in sometime last week, and I think the streets look about as good as they ever have. And Lehigh Cement Company has agreed to bring the sweeper back probably the last, well, maybe the first week of June prior to the carnival, and make Church Street and the carnival grounds and Main Street and High Street look real nice for people coming into town. So, any questions or comments on my report? Community Deputy Mark?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
The Sheriff's Office handled one hundred and twenty-five incidents for the month of April following a brief summary of those incidents. On April seventeenth, between ten-thirty and eleven-thirteen, eleven-eleven fourteen, the Sheriff's Office responded via to Church Street for report destruction of property. Upon arrival, there was two vehicles with two hundred and eighty dollars worth of damage done, tires were slashed, possible known suspects, as no other citizens in the area recorded any damage. I think they had a discounter tenant there in the past. So, it's still being under investigation at this time. On April sixteenth, I responded up to the Brethren Center to meet Mr. Jerry Kern, reference to some drawings that were placed on one of the poles near the smoking area for the residents. It was kind of strange with these drawings. They were kind of like a paragonic Japanese-Chinese writings. I consulted with different people at McDaniel College, as well as Carroll Community College, to try to figure out, you know, took a picture and sent it up. Because there was a sign out there at the Brethren Center that talks about, and Mr. Paul Stewart probably knew, one talks about peace, it's a straight up-and-down pole. Well, these writings were similar to that. I don't know what was going on with that, but we did run it through various people. They could not come up with any solution. So, I don't know. So, I was just trying to imitate what they were supposed to do, take care of the poles were creased up in the area. On April thirtieth, Councilman Smith already alluded to the Sylvis Field Sinkhole, where the barriers were pushed into the sinkhole. The sinkhole has been filled, as far as I could find, when I talked to some people in the area, I found the two white male juveniles who were possibly involved with that. They were seen running from the area, one was heavyset. This area is back in Sylvis Field, back at Pass Escape Park. So, if anybody sees anybody back there, especially these two, let them know, call Sheriff's Office, message to me, we want to get identified. That area is, we have property back there, and I've talked to Mr. Redwood, and he kind of knows the area a little better, so they know. It's an open area, park, it seems, a lot of people walking around back there. We don't want anybody to get hurt. Okay. On April twenty-fifth, around four-ten PM, the area responded to one-twenty-eight Church Street in reference to neighborhood dispute. This area borders the old hardware store in one-thirty-two. And as we, some of us are aware, there was been continuing problems on that driveway there, about this property. It was determined, walked back, that was a property. I met Sharon Pennington, landlord for one-twenty-six and one-twenty-eight. She is meeting with Mr. Sugar, who's a property owner on one-thirty-two. The fence was erected on their property due to numerous vandalism complaints that had gone on for years, and the residents basically had enough that cars were getting damaged and things of that nature. So, basically, the people at one-twenty-six and one-twenty-eight erected the fence. By doing so, that causes the pedestrian walkway to not be there anymore, and people have to walk around a block to get to the trash cans, or many vehicles are parked in the rear. This is a civil matter. I talked to Mr. Schaefer about that also, fences and code are fine. So, I met Ms. Pennington, she's a realist, last night, and I said, look, you know, get together with them and get this posted, let the residents know, especially that, hey, this is a valid property line. You do have to respect the legal property charge of the trust. So, they're going to get those notifications out, and we'll get the notifications out also, identify a lot of people. But it sounds like they're going to work it out together fine, as landlords, and they already have, it's just the tenants are kind of unaware, and so it really seems to be out of control at this time. Okay. For the month, as far as traffic stops, fifty-six citations under warnings were issued. As Councilman Smith alluded to, I'm going to be adjusting my hours in some of the coming days to come in very early for some of these trucks that we have complaints about the warnings. As far as the carnival and parade, I've been talking to Chief Coe, and we just got a final arrangement. So, with that, as far as traffic control, the auxiliary office is not going to be available, and we're going to be short on manpower. So, as far as for these intersections, I'm trying to make sure I get all the fire department personnel I can. So, he's reached out to some of the other agencies, fire department agencies such as New Bridge and Windfield. So, we should have a cover of that.
Very good.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mark. West Carroll Rec Council, on their behalf, if the middle school does close, they're going to be missing a very valuable gymnasium. I've contacted the Brethren Service Center to see whether or not they could be able to use that gym. It's a little smaller gym, but at least for practices, it would give them an opportunity to utilize that, possibly maybe free or at a reduced rate than what they charge now. So, hopefully they'll be willing to help us out. Fire Chief Tom Coe, not here. I know he would ask everyone to support the carnival, which is June sixth through the eleventh, and parade is seven o'clock sharp on the eighth Wednesday night. So, come out and support that. That is their biggest fundraiser. They just put a new engine, well, not in service yet, they're just getting it today or tomorrow.
We'll be back down tomorrow.
And that was not a cheap piece of apparatus. So, the way they are able to buy that is through fundraising, and the carnival, again, is one of their biggest. So, come out and help support the volunteer firefighters. Town Manager Frank, Tab Six.
Okay. The Lagoon Decommissioning Project, making some progress there. The contract to remove the sludge was awarded at the work session, and that's where I'm not to exceed an amount of four hundred thousand dollars. And that service agreement has been prepared, and it's been out to borrow organic technologies for their review and signature, so we can get that locked in for them to begin that work. Spoke with the representative, and the mayor will be on site sometime when they do some pilot testing of their equipment and their flow meters and things like that, to see how all works with the sludge. It's a little different setup maybe with their, so some force of removing that. Streetscape planning assistance, as the mayor reported, we met with some of the state highway officials on April eighth, and we were waiting for their response, for any ideas or suggestions they may have on being the project affordable, or how we might be able to handle repayments to them for that project. So, we're still waiting for that. In the meanwhile, about three million dollars' worth of possible funding, over the course of twenty years, has been identified within our town, a financial plan. So, we do have maybe a stepping stone into that project. And also, I've had some conversations with USDA about them doing some financing, and what they might be able to do. One thing I did find out, they don't do any sort of step-up financing, in other words, where you start with a lower payment and step it up over time. That's not something they do. So, that idea wouldn't work with the USDA. Home Station replacement, this is pretty good news. We finally closed on the one who closed that, and the town's receiving a seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar reimbursement for that project. That's technically not ours, just yet, we've got to wait till tomorrow. But it's settled, we made that draw. That leaves us with about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to be applied to our INI project. I think last month, I might have used a different figure, but I got some numbers mixed up. It's a hundred and eighty thousand rep out of that towards our INI. So, that's been good. We do, we will have one outstanding payment, and that's our bond council, because they, we haven't issued an invoice from them just yet. So, we want to pay a bond council, but that's not going to be huge. So, it's big enough not to be huge. So, that's good news, because that's the money we need to pay for the first project, the Lagoon Decommissioning. So, that's just going back into our accounts for that. Scoreline Drive, that bid was awarded at the April eighteen work session for ninety-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. That service agreement has been prepared, and four stand balls for review and their signature. This, you might think, since I've been here in two thousand and ten, we've done, this is our second red project, basketball. We did a water street project for about twenty-six, thirty thousand, I think it was. And this is the second one. That just shows you that the impact of the loss of the highway user revenue, you just don't have the money to do these street projects. But hopefully, that'll continue in the construction of the projects. The Blue Ridge and College Engineering Study, Mayor Wilk and Councilman Huffman and I met and reviewed it together, generated some comments. I've sent them back to the engineer Arrow. They want to incorporate those comments, we'll respond to them, whichever is appropriate. And I've asked them to present the fund report at the May sixteenth work session, so we'll be seeing that forward. Meanwhile, that, what we've had is going to be incorporated in the grant request as essentially a preliminary engineering for that project. So, of course, we can get reimbursement actually. That's good. Just a little piling on on the town beautification day, if you want to deal with that. We did four projects. We cleaned up the plantings at Memorial Park, Mines Park, Main Street Park, and the Amory Walking Trail. And, you know, it was not a very nice day, which really turned out, and people were very productive. We were going to paint our inlets, you know, we painted most, apparently missed a few. We painted the inlets blue, with Chesapeake Bay private protection. We were going to come back and stencil those, but we couldn't update because it was so damp. So, we'll be doing that later this year, and we'll put the people that want to come around. But we had a stencil, we had to paint, just couldn't do it. We did fill four dumpsters down the Giroade site, and that's pretty many. That's a lot. I'm thinking about pickup truck loads of stuff come in, forty of the big dumpsters. The guy's smashing, you know, with the loader, they can smash it all. So, there's a lot of stuff.
There's four or five pickup trucks in line almost the entire morning.
A lot of pickup trucks loaded, but that's a good, that's a good service that's provided for the residents. Snowstorm Janus, FEMA continues to process reimbursement, based on the most recent view, about eleven thousand dollars of eligible costs, of which we will get seventy-five percent reimbursement. Don't know, I don't know when these dollars are going to roll in, but that's the latest. And we are, we are on the front edge of the wave. We're going to push ones in. I talked to the guy, he said, they're going to be different lengths. So, he hasn't started, Ballmer County, you know, some of the places county's had me really start, I mean, it's rolling from, that's good. Blue Ridge Manor, stormwater retrofit. County has submitted a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant request to the National Fish and Wildlife Commission to fund a portion of that retrofit. That will be to, that money will be essentially applied to the idea that they would approve a nutrient reduction of stormwater coming out of that pond, if we get it. The total project cost on that is estimated to be five-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars. So, to get the two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant would be significant. But here's the real bargain on that. We pay about sixteen thousand dollars a year in the stormwater management. And we're going to get a five-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-dollar project. So, I don't know if this is a pretty good deal.
Find some more of those deals.
If you remember, that was a pretty agonizing process.
Oh, it was.
Again, I think it was a workup. So, that's what I have reports on. If you have any questions or...
Any questions or comments for Frank? Thank you, Frank. Good job, as always. Treasurers Report, Tab Seven, Donna?
Before the Monday April, in the general fund, we ended with a balance of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and seven cents. And we now have in our capital budget for the general side, eighty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. The enterprise fund ended with a balance of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty dollars and sixteen cents. The three orders in capital reserve is at three-eighty-six, four-ninety-nine, eighty-four. Our loan repayment is at two-thousand, two-thirty, one-hundred-and-thirty-five. Money market is at fifty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-three, ninety-one. And the mediation fund is at thirty-four thousand, fourteen, ninety-nine, and just tonight with the seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand.
We'll be back up.
We still have seventeen properties in the area for sale, five also in foreclosure, and three commercials available. So, that's a lot for us, for a small town. Any questions?
Good job, Donna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lehigh Update, Andy's not here. Things are moving along. I think they're on schedule for the conveyor belt. Any old business?
Residents' concerns.
Oh, I'm sorry. Residents' concerns. Anybody sign up?
No one's...
No, bye. New business, we did our recognition. Introduction of Budget Ordinance, and that ordinance number will be O-five dash O-four dash sixteen. Does anybody need any explanation on this? In the ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of New Windsor to provide for the adoption of the budget, the levy of taxes for the use of the town for the period July first, two thousand and sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, and to further provide for the collection of said taxes, and for the payment of interest and penalties occurring thereon, in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the Town of New Windsor and Local Government Article Title Five, the Code of Maryland, annotated Code of Maryland. And the tax rate is the same that we're introducing. I hear a motion to introduce ordinance number O-five, O-four, sixteen.
I so move.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cusson, signed by Councilman Smith, to introduce ordinance number O-five dash O-four dash sixteen. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, saying aye. Those opposed, so carry.
Mayor, if I could just say a couple of things. The hearing on the budget will be at the June first town council meeting. The scheduling and things like that, we didn't, we could have made the May work session date, but it works out a little better with timing and everything. So, it'll be on June first. Just a couple of things that have happened since last time. County Commissioners have continued to include the second NPDES Position with National Pollution Discharge Elimination System and Compliance Position, which is, helps with the stormwater management projects in review. There is an additional, that we pay a portion of that, but we don't have to make any adjustment for that, because I had already anticipated that and included that in our budget. What I didn't anticipate was that the highway user revenue, we had gotten a preliminary estimate of what we were going to get through the grant through the governor's office. And what ended up happening was, that's being funded at the same level that they funded it in two thousand and sixteen, which is less than what the anticipated distribution was based on, by about twenty-five-hundred dollars to us. So, that's what that means to us. I don't think it requires us to make an adjustment in our budget per se, because sometimes it still comes in more than what they estimate. So, it's a small... So it's a small amount, but it did, it did make a little, little change in something based on just what happened with the legislature. And just, just as one thing I wanted to cover, I think Donna covered it pretty good, our capital project reserve is eighty-six thousand dollars right now. But we do anticipate a ninety-four thousand dollar transfer, this is our general fund capital project, a ninety-four thousand dollar transfer out of this budget. So that will give us the funding we need to do our project, the Sporeline Drive project, because right now, you know, we're a little under that. But we'll have, that will make that, make that work. And of course, when we get our reimbursement, that'll refresh that lagoon remediation, so we'll have the money to do that project as well. So from the, from the capital project perspective, we're okay. So I just wanted to...
Thank you. Anybody have any announcements? I do, and it probably sounds like a public announcement for an event. New Windsor Lions Club Family Fun Fest, formerly known as May Day, it will be this Saturday, May seventh, from nine AM to four PM. Breakfast and lunch served by the Lions Club, pit beef sandwiches and french fries by the New Windsor Fire Department, funnel cakes by West Carroll Rec Council, baked goods by New Windsor Middle School eighth grade. This is possibly one of their last events that they will be holding. And I think the proceeds will go to their eighth grade school dance, so come out and support them for that. French Guy Key High School FFA will be selling plants, hanging plant holders, and cornhole boards. There'll also be a car, truck, and motorcycle show. And that will be registration from nine to twelve. We'll have People's Choice Award, best car, best truck, and best bike, cash drawings of a hundred and fifty, a hundred dollars and fifty dollars, and trophies were donated by three local businesses, Garber's Automotive, Munchire's Upholstery Place, and New Windsor Automotive. Tube's Troops Bike Challenge will have registration, or sign up from nine to nine forty-five. The ride leaves at ten o'clock, and when they come back, they'll have a bike challenge. There'll be certain ones that will be selected to participate in a couple challenges. One will be what they call a slow ride, see how slow you can ride your bike to a certain distance, and then also a ring toss with a passenger on the back. So looking forward to that. Also, live music this year, ten to twelve, we'll have the Yancey Brothers Gospel Group from Newark, Delaware. Twelve to two, our local, our own local singing group, Dempsey and Rebecca Price, right here in New Windsor. And from two to four, Dixie Highway Band, they've been around for about thirty years. So come on out and enjoy that. And for the kids, we're going to have a three-in-one moon bounce. And then also, later this month, Memorial Day Service will be Sunday, May twenty-ninth, at six PM, on the Presbyterian Church Yard. And the New Windsor Middle School will be our keynote speaker program. They have a Project American, and the keynote speaker right now, I think, is, will be a seventh grader. But we're trying to incorporate the middle school as much as possible into our town events while they're still here in town. So come out and support the students and also honor those that have served. New Windsor Fire Department's Carnival, again, June sixth through the eleventh, parade Wednesday, June eighth, seven PM. Also, not do you have to come out and just support the carnival, but there are plenty of opportunities to help the fire department in the food stand, the Lions Club, if you want to help make pretzels, or be in the ticket booth. The ticket booth is a great opportunity. I mean, it is air-conditioned. So on a hot summer night, that is the place to be. So with that, but in all seriousness, do come out and support the volunteer fire department. Like I say, it's their biggest fundraiser, and they do a lot of work, and it's all for your benefit. So any other announcements?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm just trying to recall, a few months ago, you issued a challenge to the city of Westminster.
Oh, you are correct. Thank you for...
At TriVent. Do you have any results of that?
Yes. Roy lived in, town resident here, asked us to accept a challenge from the Westminster City Mayor and Council to events, cornhole contest out at TriVent that was held the other Sunday. Councilman Huffman, Councilman Paul's Grove, myself and my wife attended. And we took two out of three, so we beat the city of Westminster, the mayor and council. And Frank, I'm going to hear about this later, I know. So we will be willing to go and defend our title next year. So here, this is a challenge to the mayor of Westminster and city council. We'll take you on again next year. So, but we have a ringer. He's very serious. You think Ed is laid back? Uh-uh. Not on the course. But it was a lot of fun, and it was an event for forty-five years and older, and they let me get in there anyway. So just laugh at the funny parts, guys. No, but it was a lot of fun, and Frank also had a big part in it. You want to talk about, a little bit about what you organized?
Well, I mean, there was, I think there were fifteen or so events over the entire campus of the college. Because of my involvement with running, I did what was called a tri-run. And you did a cross-country run, and then you did a little obstacle course, over some hay bales, and threw a maze and things like that. And then at the end, you had to do some mental quizzes, some optical illusions, some logic problems. And so it was pretty much fun, and you got, you got points for each thing that you did. So we had a, we had a good time with that. So, but I do happen to have the, I do happen to have the puzzles here, if anyone wants to challenge themselves tonight.
Maybe work session.
Keep us awake.
But again, resident Roy lived in, who is with the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County, helped really organize that along with that staff. They're a great group. They've also participated in Walk with the Mayor every other Tuesday, so Roy deserves a lot of credit for that. And it was a great event, and hopefully they'll build on it, and we'll defend our title next year proudly. So anybody have anything else? If not, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Gary, Ruby, thank you.